Thank you very much, everyone. I'm so excited to begin this labor presentation. One of the participants does not need to enter the room yet. All right. Um, I would like to first start off by saying we have three very special people in the room that I would like to acknowledge and honor in this moment. Mr. Stone's birthday is tomorrow. And here is Mr. Stone, representative of G O F P. We also have Chris, whose birthday is today. Please stand up, Chris. And Kito. So let's all, let's all, uh, Chris, hit your cape. Let's give him a hint.
Aww.
Um, let's take a hint with all birthday people, please. I would say, happy birthday to you, Chris.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you, our political friends. Happy birthday to you. Uh, thank you very much for the council's indulgence. Um, we're gonna move to our labor session. There's so many esteemed labor leaders in the room. I'm so happy that you were able to join us. Um, we're gonna start our presentation off with Ms. Victoria Leonard. Uh, she's going to give a brief overview of several problems of the labor movement as it relates to how it affects, you know, people. Uh, and then we're gonna turn it over to a Q and A for our entire panel.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Burrows. Appreciate the introduction. Again, on Victoria, sorry, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Burrows. Appreciate the introduction. Again, I'm Victoria Leonard. I'm with the Baltimore Washington Labor District Council. Uh, the B W L P C is an affiliate of the Labor International Union of Northern America. And in this Baltimore, Washington area, we represent 7,500 members. We have three locals in Maryland, and two of those are located right here in Prince George's County. Um, one in Camp Springs and the other in Overmont, Maryland. And then our third local is in Baltimore City. And La Union members are primarily construction laborers that perform infrastructure work. Um, that includes things like building roads, bridges, tunnels, installing and repairing water, sewer, and gas lines. And laborers are considered the backbone of any construction project, um, and they often are typically assisting some of the skill trades. And I'm pleased to share that about a third of our members live in Prince George's County. They live in, in all nine districts, but I would say they are concentrated in two districts, and that's District Two, District Three, and District Five, which is really where all of the, the portable housing is clustered. This is where you're gonna find our members. So when I first saw this graphic, I thought it was really an incredible graphic because to me, a picture is worth more than a thousand words. And this graphic really sums up the importance of the union movement. And that income inequality, the inequality that we have in this country is inversely, inversely correlated with the decline of union membership. Um, and that increasing union density is one of the key ways that we can address income inequality. And so it's very exciting within this framework to know that we have a new county council that really understands this relationship and the value of union membership to address income inequality. And I speak on behalf of La Union, I'm sure my other partners in, in the labor movement and in the construction trades that were really excited to work with you on, on this and to improve the lives of working people and grow the supply of quality workers in the county. So why are unions important? I mean, there's a couple of basic things. They improve, they improve wages and benefits for workers. They reduce income inequality, which we talked about. They also reduce racial and gender disparities in wages. And what we also know is that de-unionization depresses wages and that when unions are strong, they set wage standards for the, for entire industries and occupations. And that when union density is high, non-union workers benefit from higher wages as well. And here's another, um, chart again, a picture's worth of a thousand words. And it shows another reason why unions are so important to the economy and to workers. And that's because union workers are more likely to have benefits. And so here in this chart, you see that union workers are more likely to have paid sick leave and health insurance. And then, since we are construction trades up here, um, we wanted to focus also on the construction sector. And what you see in this chart is that union construction workers earn more. And I was able to go and find the most recent statistics online in a January 20th, 2022 news release published by the U S Bureau of Labor Statistics. The median pay for a union construction worker in 2021 was $1,344 a week. And in contrast, the median pay for a non-union construction worker in 2021 was $922 a week. It's a difference of $422 a week, and if my math is correct, something like a, a third, a third more. If you work union, you make about, on average, a third more a week. That's pretty amazing. And so again, going back to that first chart and then looking at this, this chart, like other, other industries, union membership in construction has declined over time. And I have the most recent statistics from Maryland, um, from 2021, that 12.2% of, of construction workers in Maryland are union, but almost one in five, like 17.3%, are represented by a union. So that's a pretty, um, pretty impressive statistic. And so we're very excited because we feel that there's such value to the union movement and growing unionization, and that there is a role for local governments to reverse de-unionization by ensuring that they spend their taxpayer dollars creating quality union jobs. And that includes using project labor agreements that create a pipeline of union construction jobs on home works projects. Um, it also includes post-construction labor peace agreements on county-supported economic development projects, as well as things like laboring band actors and going after wage theft. And then another point that I think is really important to make, and I think the discussion this morning really touched upon it, um, especially the exchange between Councilmember Burrows and Councilmember Franklin, and that's that supporting the minority business community and creating quality union jobs are not mutually exclusive, and they shouldn't be mutually exclusive. They're really both important policy goals. And this, this is just a chart that shows some local jurisdictions meeting, meeting both policy goals really well. And then also some particular projects in the D C area that have had project labor agreements on them, but have also had a strong minority business requirement, and those goals have been met. So again, it's possible to achieve multiple policy, policy goals, and it just takes political will. And we hope that here within the council, we do have the political will to achieve those goals. I also wanted to highlight that the bipartisan infrastructure law that the federal government passed last year includes a lot of grant programs, a lot of funding over the next decade, and a lot of those grant programs in their NOFA's, their Notice of Funding Availability, they include preferences for project labor grants. And so what I did is I just made a quick chart of some of the fiscal year 2022 notices that include preferences for P O As. And so our goal would be to work with you, to take advantage of these opportunities, to put in grant applications that include project labor agreements, to improve your odds of, of winning the grants, and then we're happy to work with you to, on the wording and making sure they're successful. Our national building trades is great contracts in the Biden administration, as well as most of our internationals, such as La Union. So I think we can really make a difference in helping you succeed in any grant applications that you apply for. So in closing, I just found this great quote from President Biden, who describes himself as the most pro-union president of the United States ever. And I think we would all agree that that's the case. And what he says is, "When unions win, workers across the board win. That's a fact. Families win. Communities win. America wins. We grow." And despite this, workers have been getting cut out of the deal for too long a time. Simply put, worker power is essential to building our economy, the economy back better than before. It's just that face, Senator, sorry, President Joe Biden. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I think you did an excellent job at setting the stage for the phase two of this conversation that's accumulated between the council and the experts. Uh, and so, uh, are there any questions from the council members or any points that anyone would like to raise, Sarah Wester?
Um, I just, you know, wanna ask, um, have you or any of the unions here, have you all worked with minority-owned, minority-owned contractors, um, with, with any P O As? Have you all worked with any minority business, businesses?
Building we're in, this was a P O A. One of the street was a P O A. We had minority-owned, well, specifically the black owned contractors.
I think unfortunately, we haven't had a lot of project agreements. The M G M and the Gayville were on the project labor agreements when they were built. Um, but as far as minority-owned contractors, I think everybody on the council is very familiar with a company called R S C. They are a very large minority, minority-owned operated business operated by John Johnson and Jeff Bolden. Um, I, I think at some point in time, I've seen pictures of just about everybody on the council with Mr. Bolden. So, you know, I think you're all familiar with him.
So this is a, that is a Prince George's County-based minority business that also ran with the labor.
Yeah, both.
Both of them.
Singing toward both levels.
Singing towards both levels.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have examples of this.
Yes.
Yep.
And we do have quite a few, we, we do have, you know, that's just one example. We do have north of 30 minority contractors, a lot of which are located and operate out of Prince George's County. Um, and we have some smaller businesses. I know that a lot of times they think about union contractors, they think about these great big, large contractors that perform work. We got minority contractors, only have two people working on it who's doing great.
Could you talk about, uh, I, I know that some of your members have actually become small business, minority business owners. Could you talk a little bit about that?
So, for example, last Friday, we held a, um, new business owner seminar. So the one thing about, you know, union labor is the, the idea is to help folks by educating them and giving them certifications and giving them the credentials they need to stand on their own, whether they decide to stay union or go independent. Okay? A lot of independent contractors that operate in the county were union trained and decided to step away from union labor. Okay? Um, but in regards to minority business, we had a seminar last week. We had D O L in, we had Social Security Office in, and M B program. You named the program. We had it in, all to, this is, this was step one, in giving these individuals the information they needed to build a sustainable business over the course of a career. So, uh, Diggs Plumbing Services is one, Ellie Diggs, he's actually retired. He's a long time, remember, he's been in local for over 30 years. He's retiring his plumbing, plumbing company. Uh, one thing we look to do is say that one minority contractor, pass that on to the next minority contractor with a proper business plan and showing them how to do that. All right? Um, so in regards to your direct question, we have several members that look to be entrepreneurs, but it's up to us to teach them how to be in the business. It's one thing to open up a company, anybody can do that for a couple hundred bucks. Okay? How do you earn your books? How do you get your insurance? How do you get your bonding? How do you pay taxes? How do you keep your business afloat over the course of time to pass it on to your kids or make it a reputable company to be sold to the next person? So that's what we try to do. Um, we have several members, just like Chris said, that are just one or two man shops. That's all they want. They don't want a big, large company. They just want, just them and their kid sometimes, and what they want, the benefits and everything that goes along with it. And as an independent, to go out and pick up the retirement benefits, the insurance benefits, and all of that type of stuff, it's expensive. So to connect yourself to a union entity, it gives you an opportunity to pick up the rates and everything else that we figured out that's just a line item for you and your budget and run your business. So that's how we operate. Um, and that's, you know, that's not necessarily just a minority thing. Okay? That's something that we do for all our members. But me personally, um, I mean, if y'all, I'm black, okay? We local five has been around for over 130 years. Okay? I took over as business manager in 2020. Okay? Um, a lot of my mentors are black members that coached me up through the ranks and helped me step into the position that I'm in. Okay? It's a passion of mine to pass on what the opportunities that I've been given to other minorities within my local and surrounding locals, because a lot of opportunities that are being presented aren't carved up in a way to where we're gonna give you skips and education. Okay? Opportunities may be presented, but it comes at a cost. Cost associated. I mean, the interest is that, or the entrance for our local, our local union is five questions. That's it. We don't even test on math, because we did a study that figured out that math ruled out most minority communities because math, or because school in those areas weren't the best. So we didn't want a test that created biases. So we took math out of the test. It's a personality assessment. And I'll give you an example. The first question in our, in our, in our interview process is, your schedule to be at work at 5:00 A.M., your car broke down, how do you get there? Process of elimination. How do you deal with, it doesn't matter minority, whatever, we want the best people, and we wanna put you on a platform to withstand on your own outside of a program or the local union. We, we'd love to have you as a union member for your life, but how do we cultivate you as a person and as a business for the rest of your life? That's what we do.
I just received a note that I forgot to introduce, so everyone just introduce themselves. Then for Chris, so, that's embarrassing.
All right, Chris Meddella, I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary, Treasurer, Stevie Fitter's Local 602.
Victoria Leonard, Political and Leadership Director, Baltimore, Washington Labor District Council.
T. Smalls, I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary, Treasurer, Plumers and Gas, 6025.
My name is Roxy McKee. I'm the Community and Political Liaison for the Painters and Allied Trades.
Roger Mano, I'm an attorney.
Anthony Wares?
Thank you, Councilmember Burrows. I want to say thank you to the union ladies for joining us today. We're a treat. Uh, I have a question about building capacity and the relationship that you have with, not only the public school system, but community talent. You know, we, we, we all have heard, uh, especially when I was growing up, uh, you know, we want our children to go to college. It was discriminatory in a way because there was people, I got involved with trades, and they didn't look at, they didn't look at it as an education, an additional education, a higher learning education. So my question is, the, the opportunity for access and equity when it comes to our young scholars that are in our educational system, having the opportunity to choose? And what is that relationship? Because I didn't have that, and I went to the public school system one boy. So what role do you all play in creating that equity and opportunity? Where's that relationship at? And how many people have had exposure to those opportunities other than a job fair or something of that nature?
Well, I mean, most recently, I mean, you got an opportunity to attend. We, uh, we, we took buses and we put them on different points in Prince, Prince George's County, and we sent out an invite to counselors, principals, or any other administrative, or administrative personnel that wanted to attend. And we did a tour of the local union facilities in the Triangle, 602, 5, and I B W 26. Um, that is the first step in bridging that gap for us with, on the education piece, because coming through school, the trades are only exposed to the bottom half of the kids, because that's all you're gonna do if you're gonna be a construction worker. And for me, I, I was blessed enough to go to college with a football scholarship, and it catapulted me in different directions in life. But for us, we've got to get counselors, we've got to get everyone on board, and that's, that's what we've been doing as far as bridging that gap between us and the county and all surrounding areas, to be honest. Because the, the education, the education with our trade is not magnified the way it should be. Okay? And it's not, it's, it's not laid out in a way to where it's truly an education. It's true, it's, it's, it's depicted as a backup plan. And that's not true. That's not true. Every member we have knows their path to success from day one of your apprenticeship. What we do when we, like you said, we don't do only job fairs. We go to the schools, we do the council tours, we do, um, door knocking in, in different campaigns and all that type of stuff. That's honestly, a lot of times in the, in the, in the political drives and things like that, we do, that's, we, we figure out a lot of the really strong-headed individuals that really wanna be a part of an organization. That's, that's what we're really fighting a lot of time. But there is no, um, I would say right now, you know, working with the counties and the different jurisdictions, because we cover Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and I know portions, well, portions that way, um, Virginia, Northern Virginia, and D C. So we have to blanket information to all areas. So A F L C I O, building trades, um, pipe trades, all the different organizations for us specifically, is how we get the message across. You've probably got a different, you know, or, you know.
I can say with the Painters and Allied Trades, we also have partnered up with D C or a women's group that they wanna just, so it's called a apprenticeship readiness. And it's a summer program where they go six weeks to see if this fits for them. Sometimes, you know, you think it's the coolest thing to do, to go and be high in the sky, putting glass. Once you're out there, you realize that may not be your thing, and then you can go try to go to trade. We also have done it in Sutherland High School, I wanna say about 10 years ago. We went and volunteered our, one of our trainers. And from there, a high, two high school kids came out of that, went into our apprenticeship programs. And I gotta tell you, one of them already from being with us, when he graduated to be a journeyman, he decided to, and he's still a construction worker within the union. So once you're trained within us, you can go anywhere in the United States, actually anywhere in the world. But we do partner up with, I know that this summer, we're trying to work with Alexandra City to have a youth camp, to where they get exposed by us to what the trades are, how to use a hammer, how to do a putty knife, so that they can get exposure that is not, as you mentioned, a dirty word, but it is a career. I also went to college, and once I graduated, I wasn't making what I make when you actually go through the trades. And I bet, I tell you, I still have a student loan from my college education at Maryland University, which I don't have that coming from the trade.
So one thing to speak directly to the county, I'm sorry, Chris. Um, County Exec does a summer passport program, um, in the county to where she gets kids from all over, and they go to different businesses throughout the county. So as far as exposing kids to different things, I think with County Exec, with that program, I think it was kind of mirrored after there was something that I heard that Marion Berry did a long time ago. But what that program has done, and I think this is the second year, and we got a phone call, do you wanna participate? Right away, we jumped on it. All right? So kids come in for a day, we take them to what we call Plumbing One-on-One, specifically to my trade. We take them to do the trade, we expose them to the trade, we take their parents on a tour of the facility. We talk to them about the benefits, the pay, and all of that type of stuff. And honestly, it was surprising to me, the amount of parents that came in the first year we did it, that maybe within a five mile radius of our training facility, and did not know a free education was right around the corner for their kid. And all the while, they were worried about what the kid was gonna do in life. Okay? So I think that program, that passport program that County Exec rolled out was a really great program, and we're happy to participate in it. But that's, that's a huge thing for us, and that's not directed at kids that are high school. I think she opened that up from 12 to 18. So we've had a kid that weren't even old enough to think about college and come in, but we still did it. Um, and so that's one thing right there, specifically to Prince George's County, that I think is a great commodity to expose individuals to business and union trades.
Uh, just to add to that, it's a great question, right? So I'm a product of Prince George's County Public Schools. You know, when I was a teenager, I was going down the wrong path. I had a really good talk with Councilmember Hoffman about this, because it was a great talk we had. And if it wasn't for the fact that I knew somebody, my father was in the trade, and had the opportunity to learn about it, I, I don't know where I would have been, right? And because I knew about it and got introduced to it, I got an apprenticeship program at all 18. Um, in a way, it kind of saved my life, but not just my life, it saved a lot of the friends that I was growing up with that also needed a path to go down too. And that's how everybody learned about it before. The only way you knew about it is if you knew somebody that was going through the apprenticeship program, right? Or go, or in the trades. And so the, the, the days have changed. We're doing a lot of outreach. I think over the last year, we, we've visited and done presentations at over 100 high schools. Um, I couldn't tell you offhand how many of those were in Prince George's County, but the tour that you came and joined us with is, is a great start for that afterwards. We've got five invitation visits, we've already went out to those schools, and we've got some more on the list to go to. So that's changing. But in our conversation, when we sat down and talked, the more people get into the trade, the more people in the communities that you see somebody being productive in it as a plumber or a pipefitter or a laborer or any of the other crafts, the more it's gonna catch on. So as we, as we start to build back those relationships with school, and we get some examples, some more role models in the trades, and showing people, you know, hey, yeah, you can have a nice car and go to work every day too, right? And you could, you could have nice things, go work every, every day too. It's not all about college. It's not all about breaking the law. It's not all about going down a different direction. It's all there, but you know, the more examples we can create, the more partnerships we can create in Prince George's County. We're here to do whatever you all want. You want more people in our apprenticeship program, just tell us that, we'll make it If you want more people in our apprenticeship program, just tell us that, and we'll make it happen.
I would also add that in addition to reaching out to schools, which we all do, our colleagues have described that very well, we also do a lot with faith-based organizations and local community groups to find individuals who are interested in a construction career. So that's another avenue. And I know that at, you know, we also, a very important goal is to create, and I'm sure for everyone else here, is creating opportunities for returning citizens.
Can I have one more question?
Yes.
Thank you. Maybe someone else wants to... So my questions are centered around capacity, okay? And making sure Prince George's County residents have the opportunity to work, get an education, and actually potentially fulfill the American dream of homeownership. We want that for all of our scholars. So my question is, will we stay in town for the acceptance rate of those students that get into community? I want to focus on access.
That's it. It's five questions. If you're in a community college, and you get into a community college, you're working for an open shop test. You're checking that you're working in another union sector, and you're wanting to be a member, and you're doing another program that's not an affiliate of our apprenticeship program, it's not a question. Come right in. You don't need a test.
You said anyone can get in. I'm focusing on access. As a meaning, the students that go to Prince George's County Public Schools, if they don't know it, they don't know. So I'm trying to figure out, from the amount of students that go through either a community college or the Prince George's County Public School System, what is the rate of individuals that actually live here in Prince George's County that are having opportunities to get into there? What is your acceptance rate from people that are actually in your union right now? Not in union, but your apprenticeship program?
How many apprentices we have in Prince George's County residents?
It comes from the public school system, I can't leave the public school system.
That's, honestly, I don't want to tell you, but I would need to run a report. I would need to run a report.
I think it's important so we know from a standpoint of where we need to go, if there's some inequities in that process, to bridge that. Because there is a stigma when it comes to the type of education that the trades program is great. Some people don't even think it's an education, all right? I've heard on the campaign trail, you're uneducated, you didn't go to a traditional college. That's discriminatory. It's occupational discrimination and educational discrimination. So I'm trying to get to the point at the cross of the matter, how we create the opportunity to build capacity to our scholars here in Prince George's County.
So I'll tell you one, I'm sorry, real quick, one thing that does give you an opportunity for us to direct entry and pull them in even more is a PLA.
That's exactly what I was going to say, is that part of building capacity is having a pipeline and the projects on which to place people. Because we do not train people just to train them. We want them, we train them so that they can go to work on a job. And one of the best examples we have of the pipeline of Project Labor Agreements is in the District of Columbia. We've just been really successful there in speaking years of work. And hopefully, we can replicate something like that here, where we just have a whole series of them, and we're able to have workers go for one project. And it's really having that pipeline, because you want the worker to not, you don't want it to be one and done. You want it to be a career. You want them to have health insurance and retirement, and to do that, you really need that pipeline. And so the capacity is just part of the opportunity and capacity are related to the projects as well.
So one example is the Purple Line Project over, that was in, off of Veterans Parkway, that had Prince George County hiring requirements on it. I was still in the field at the time, I ran that project. I had to have female Prince George's County residents, I had to have a veteran, you name it. It was a list of things that I had to check off. And what we did for the local community is we got those individuals into the program, but they weren't necessarily interested in the program. They were interested in the job, okay? There was not enough emphasis put on education and the job. Now, when that Purple Line Project closed out, it went away. It went away. When this project right here dried up, the PLA went away, those individuals went away, those businesses went away. That's the problem if we don't continue a practice of being able to bring in individuals from a certain area through a certain language and labor standards. We want them for a variation, like putting a person on a project because of a program does not set them up for life. That, all you did is enable them. You gave them some money for a period of time.
Yeah, and if you have Project Labor Agreements that have local hiring, we can take anybody that's under that local, that gets hired on that job, local hiring agreement, change their life forever.
I can give a really great example of, from DC Water, where they've been building combines who are overflow tunnels for many, many years now. And, you know, we had a returning citizen, a woman, and she started out as on the, one of the tunnels, the first tunnel, the Blue Plains Tunnel. And because there were so many tunnels that had to be filled, she's been able to go from one tunnel project to another and stay in the union and become a journeyman. So she finished her Prince program, she became a journeyman, and actually now she's the shop steward down there in one of those tunnels. And it's just a really exciting, wonderful story, but it demonstrates what that pipeline of projects can really do for a worker.
Thank you. What's the salary for a shop steward? Average?
The salary, shop stewards volunteer to help represent members on the job site. You know, the shop stewards volunteer.
So she's also on the project?
She's still on the project, and she's still a journeyman, but she's the shop steward addition.
Okay, so what's the salary you have for a journeyman?
Well, I guess, it's different for different trades, right? And so, like, the labor is the entry level, really, to construction. So our total package is going to be significantly smaller than the others. I would say on a daily pay per job, it's probably something like $32 an hour total package, something like that.
And ours in comparison, you know, for our trade, if you're working as a journeyman, a member of Local 602 and Local 5, they're about the same. It's a little bit over $100,000 on the check, and you get another $50,000 in your fringe benefits on top. You can say it's good for life.
How's it for a break?
Thank you. And I want to thank you all for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation and for the information. And we definitely want to see, I think, a sort of stronger relationship with labor in our business community. I think, I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, these have big challenges in there. I think you all are trying to name how many, you know, you didn't see these were MBEs in the county that you come up with. Quite honestly, I can't come up with five. I mean, can you all come up with? I know RSC very well. John's a really good friend of mine. Carrilla, Earthworks is another, Tri-State is another. I couldn't come up with five.
MBEs?
MBEs in the county that are union.
They're certified or black-owned, minority-owned?
Just MBEs that are in the county.
That's, like I said, that's a number that I would have to run it. But here's the thing.
There's a reason I mentioned it.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because you touched a spot for me, all right? That MBE program is a great program, but why is it so hard to become a minority business enterprise in the state of Oklahoma? But what I'm saying is, you can open up a company for 200 bucks. So for us, bonding and the ability to do the job, that's it, to be a signatory contractor.
Absolutely. No, you don't get any disagreement. The certification process needs, and that's not just, that's not the only difficulty. I think there's a proposal to create yet another for us. And they're challenging for small businesses because of all the hoops you got to jump through. You know, whether you're talking about MBEs, whether you're talking about other certification processes being proposed now, they all fall hardest on small businesses. So you're actually right. I just, unfortunately, they're the, I don't know if they're necessary or not, but they are what we have to deal with.
It is a necessary evil, because the projects, certain projects are requiring their own certain portion of the projects, okay? And it's not just Prince George's County. It's all throughout the state. So that's what I was talking about last week, where I did a minority business owner, or a business owner seminar. So it was titled as a new business owner seminar, but it turned out to be minority. That's the turnout that I got.
Let me get my question out. So I mentioned the number, because that's part of the challenge. Because there are so few minority companies in the county that are union signatory, it makes it difficult to support, for me, I'm just speaking for myself, to support Project Labor Agreements on projects. Because the feedback I didn't get from the minority business population in the county, it's just what they tell me. I'm not in business. I'm just relaying you what those who do this for a living are telling me. And what they're telling me is that it excludes for projects. It maybe not technically, but practically speaking, excludes them for projects when their project labor agreements place on those projects. And so, and part of it is, there's so few of minority companies in the county that are union signatory firms. Now, I guess my question, you even talked about this earlier, that there are a number of open shop firms that were trained, but they decided to go a different direction. I guess my question ultimately is, why is it such a challenge to get minority firms to become union signatory contractors?
It's not.
It's not.
But why are there so few?
So can I?
That's a business owner deal. That's a business decision that a minority, regardless of the color. You have to, as an owner, this ain't like you pointed out just now. We have those members that were union trained, had to go out of union, I mean, non-union. So now, here's the deal. I have members that are non-union, but they want to keep their books alive. So you find value in the benefits, but you want to operate in a private sector. A lot of the hurdles is a personal decision. It has not, like I said, that seminar that we had, I had a room filled with minority individuals wanting to be signatory contractors. And that's why we did it, because we wanted to teach them how to be signatory contractors, but not only that, do it the right way. Whatever training you need, whatever credential you need, bonding license, credit line, whatever, that sets you up with all the people that you need to get that done.
So we don't know, we haven't, we don't know why you have signed up?
So why, I mean, what I'm trying to understand is, what does a PLA have to do with a signatory contractor?
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I think you should have that conversation with more minority firms. They're the ones saying that when you put a PLA on a project, that they will shut out of you.
So can I say a few things?
That's not, I can only say, I can only say that we, you know, because there's a class of minority contractors, and we have bigger contractors that actually sub from our main to be part of the minority contractors. The problem is, as he was mentioning, that when many of the other minority contractors have two or three workers, can't even afford to pay the fees that you have to pay as a minority contractor. Some of them are $3,000. They can be used for paywalls. But they are used by our bigger contractors. You got, they usually go to the minority contractors in the area. So I don't know where you got your number, but I know that I have at least more than what you mentioned in our painting and other trades, minority contractors in the area in Prince George's County. And I don't know where you got
I was
Or your name?
Yeah, I mean
It's not accurate.
And I would love to hear some of the contractor names that you have, and figure out where this connect is. Because if they're certified, maybe they're, you said, that's what you said, is they're not certified MBEs?
They have been. I also know some that have been certified. And then sometimes they actually get pulled out because they're not paying the final fees that they're supposed to pay. And that's the county, not the state. That's the county's fault.
No, that's the state. So the county doesn't have any, the county doesn't have any certification. The states, we essentially reciprocate.
So should that be a bigger picture for your minority friends that figure that they may not be qualified?
Who's Chris?
Well, no, yeah.
So, there is a few companies that manage their business in Prince George's County. They do have your certifications. Proctor Facility Services, H&amp;P Mechanical, Pipe and Coal Corporation, Logan Mechanical. Oh, you do have quite a few other contractors that are minority-owned companies that aren't able to get their certification. They got a lot of trouble getting it, but it doesn't change the fact that they are minority-owned businesses.
And that's the point that we have as well, that someone's mentioning, that they express to us.
And if you'd like to be introduced to a few of them, we'd be glad to bring some of those owners to come talk to you and explain how things are working out well for them. One of them, for instance, I mentioned, I can tell you for a fact, when he signed, he was a signatory contractor less than a year ago. He had one employee, he's got eight now, so that's a growth story.
Sure, which one's that?
Logan Mechanical. I can get a Houston donor.
And then based in the county?
Yeah, Prince George's County is based in Cleveland. So we're talking about project labor agreements, it's about access to what we do, right? And so there's no barriers for any contractor to become a signatory contractor. It doesn't cost them anything. A lot of them don't do it because they're afraid to pay the wages and the benefits to workers. And quite frankly, most contractors in general charge the customer, and in this case, let's say it's Prince George's County is your customer, right? They're charging the customer the same amount of money, but they don't want to pay the workers the union wages or prevailing wages. That's why they don't come to us sometimes. And if we're talking about what we can do for Prince George's County, it's great that we want to help businesses in Prince George's County. We want to help create pathways for our members that are, a lot of them are Prince George's County, Maryland residents, right? Advance in their careers. But if we're not doing anything to help the actual people that live in Prince George's County to change from poverty level wages to go to upper middle-class and upper-middle-class wages, we're not doing anything. So it's great that, you know, those people are going into business. But to me, if they're afraid to become a union constructor, if they're afraid to become prevailing wages, pay prevailing wages, it's because they're afraid to pay the people what they're working. And if they're afraid to pay the people what they're working, they're not certified.
No, I appreciate that. One last thing. So I saw the projects listed that had both PLAs and MBE requirements. I noticed the South Capitol Street written on this list, because it's a recent project I looked into a little bit. I think it was a $440 million project. I believe the minority overwhelmingly business spend was about 20.6%, it was $91 million. Is that a good example? Would you hold that as a good example of the supply diversity results for PLA project? Is that a good example?
I think, I would also add that that project came in a month early. So it also shows that the volume of project labor agreements to keep something on time and on version, that example.
Okay, now, I appreciate that. You know, we did a disparity study, and according to our disparity study, the MWBE percentage on a construction project should be about 43%, for this region, based on the availability of minority or women-owned business firms in the greater DC area. So I appreciate, you know, that this project did what it did. But I still think it's way below what we need to be. And then I asked the District of Columbia for some more data. The African-American business spend on that project was only 11.6%. And then I also went a little further. I asked them, what was the African-American business spend for the DC-based firm? And it was only 6.8%. So again, these are the things that I'm concerned about. You know, I appreciate your arguments for PLAs, but I am very concerned about any possible barriers that we're putting up that restrict access to opportunity for minority businesses in Prince George's County, African-American businesses in Prince George's County. We just had two, one, we had two significant opportunities that are about to happen. And number two, we've had some longstanding issues with creating more access to opportunity for minority firms in the county. And it concerns me when there are proposals that I think are just premature. Maybe one day when we get to the point where you have more minority firms in the county that are union signatory firms, but if you can only name ten, you know, to me, that seems like it's a policy that we really need to think long and hard about before we rush to put in place. Because the unintended consequence may be that we shut out firms that had been historically discriminated against Uh, because the unintended consequence may be that we shut out firms that had been historically discriminated against and have been historically disadvantaged, like our black owned businesses in Prince George's County and even minority firms. That's my concern with project labor agreements on projects in the county.
Couldn't you set those standards higher though?
Say it again.
If you drafted a PLA, couldn't you set those standards higher?
I mean, I can write anything, right? But the question is, uh, as, as I mentioned earlier to Councilman Burrows and some of the others, there was a PLA on the, uh, Brandywine, Key's Energy Center, uh, project, it's Brandy. And, um, it had, you know, they got a, a pilot from the county, so they got a tax book. And we had a local hiring requirement, and they didn't meet it because as you got to the higher skilled trades, they couldn't fill it with Prince George's County residents. And so I mentioned that to say, I can write whatever requirement, you know, on paper we, that we want. The question is, is it going to be a practical one that we can make?
So we have signals, a chair to speak, a sorority, a chair of errors in the queue, there's manors in the queue. This is very good.
Before, before we move away from the project specific thing, for example, so recently the MGM, there was a lawsuit for individuals being transported from Rosecroft to the job site, okay? That was, that was, that project was performed under PLA. All collective bargaining agreement, union signatory contractors were not subject to that lawsuit. Everyone that was a minority business owner or a business owner period that got an opportunity to work on that project is subject to paying back wages because they didn't know what they were supposed to do with their workers and getting them on the site. So for example, that's a, that's an example of how a PLA protected folks that worked under PLA and were signatory contractors. Right now, there is no back pay, there is no fund or nothing to help these county companies that worked on that project to pay that lawsuit.
And then, and the MGM project, it was a, it was a partial PLA in the sense that you had a PLA that kicked in, um, after certain pressures, but I'm, I'm told by.
That project had everything, I mean, and in plumbing, in plumbing specifically, you had twelve contractors on that job.
Okay.
Of the twelve, there was only like five or six that were union.
Got it. Councilmember Burrows, Councilmember Chair, Councilmember Oriada, Councilmember Ivy, this could be two that I've heard of.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burrows, and thank all my colleagues in the wheelchair and the force. I think this conversation is all supposed to do. I wanted to say to you, Chris, you referenced the conversation that, as it was built, that was one of the five best conversations I've had in so long in my lifetime. Cause I always measured on the hour come and I leave that person or the individual with the conversation involved and how it would impact. That conversation impact is way down the road, I think. But I wanted to ask you all, because you already said, we talk about communities. All these residents, I think Councilman Burrows, Councilman House, Mayor Peter, some of you there. All these individuals wanting to be residents from Prince George's County. How can we, you want to, you just address that, you know, you know, we start off saying we're everybody's from Prince George's County. And they may not, I don't know, I'm sure, I'm just asking you all an opportunity just to respond to that. I'm sure you've heard of it.
I, I can start and I think, I've been with the Spanners and I Trains for twenty years. And when I started twenty years ago, I was one of the very few women, not only within the construction industry, but in became a leadership position and it was only a few handfuls that helped each other. Now with a PLA, it will provide more opportunity for more women because, believe it or not, they still don't believe that women can do the job even though we do it better, sorry, but we do. And providing a PLA, it does provide the fact that you can put more women in the jobs. You can actually diminish and eliminate the entire wage gap and not exploit them, to be quite honest with you. Um, our union has gone from one percent from when I started to now having fifteen to twenty percent of women in our construction trades. So what we were in the past is not what we are in the future, and we're thriving to increase more and more. So yes, our past is different and we're growing. So after twenty years, I'm sitting here telling you that our membership in women in construction, within Prince George's County, has grown and it's people that look like me, black and brown predominantly. And that's how we continue making access of this good chance and opportunity to Prince George's residents of all walks of life.
And in the project labor agreements for women, we've, we've seen work good. Yes, absolutely, we have plenty of residents, we have lucky Prince George's County residents that man and the job we have here. We'll take on as many more as we need to. And, and we have pre- apprentice, uh, pre- apprentice positions, but to your point on monitoring the job, it comes down to monitoring the job. We've seen projects that have local hiring where nobody pays attention to it, nobody, hey, you didn't meet your hours this month. If you're on, if you had somebody on it, on the project, on the job that's monitoring and letting them know like, hey, you were supposed to meet this many hours this month, you didn't meet this many hours in this seventy minute. Higher, you know, sure, at Prince George's County residents. Also take more Prince George's County residents, all of us have Prince George's County residents. Do whatever we can to make sure that people in these communities are working on the job.
Absolutely.
I would, I would say that's, that's, um, the same for laymen. Um, if there's a project labor agreement or any kind of local hiring requirement, for example, in the District of Columbia, it isn't a goal, it's a mandate, and so if the project is, um, with a signatory contractor or there's a PLA, they will specifically indicate when they call in the local union that they need X number of, of D C residents. And if we don't have those residents, um, as members of the union, why do we recruit, go to, go to the communities and recruit residents? And we've had great success doing that. Um, and offline, I can tell you about a project we did at D C General where we, we were targeted, um, the goal was residents from from Ward Six, Seven and Eight, and we went out and we recruited, we'd been trained in twenty five pedal, um, to do asbestos removal and demolition and, uh, paid for their licenses and just to the doctors to get their certification and everything. Um, so and because Prince George's is now much more affordable than the District of Columbia, we actually have more members, probably twice as many members who live in Prince George's County than the District of Columbia, at least since I've been with, you know, over ten years, I've really seen the share of our residents who can afford to live in the District of Columbia really shrink and, um, more live here in Prince George's County.
And that, and you know, Chris said it pretty good right there, but just to me, like, the majority of my members are Prince George's County residents. And the, the common question I get on the podium in the unions are, why we don't have the county work? Why I gotta drive all the way up to Virginia to do, to go to work? The majority of my members are Prince George's County residents, the majority of my Prince George's County residents work in Virginia. And they are trying to figure out, why aren't we working in our backyard? Why are we supporting the county so much and we, we're not getting work right here? Why are we sponsoring this program? Why are we writing this endorsement check? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? Why are we supporting the county when the county never come see us? So we want to partner with the county. There is nothing that's ever been asked in Prince George's County in any capacity, from any leader union, to where we haven't tried to work it out, okay? I've been a manager for two years. I've supported, like I said, I've, I've supported, uh, Ms. Also Brooks', um, program for the last two years. I've never mattered. Don't know. I have spoken to her office and I do whatever they ask me to do. I'll pay for whatever they ask me to pay, but I've never mattered. But that's what I'm saying, we're for people. Okay? And people that align with, that, that are advocating for people. I, my feelings aren't hurt because it's for the kids. Those kids come there, they have a good time, they get the education, their parents get the exposure, they tell it to someone, they tell it to someone, they tell someone, that's why I do this. That's why I do this. Like, I can make a lot more money doing something else, but I have a passion for people. I grew up dirt road, board house, South Carolina, okay? My dad was a machinist, okay? Georgia Pacific, union worker. My community is a black community, I, I mean, African American, if you want to be technical here, alright? And that union was African American union, and my father ran that union, okay? That union supported that community. Outside, if it wasn't for that union, our community would have been exploited. Because down south is cheap labor. They don't know anything about union, they don't know how to work that way. As a result, nineteen ninety one, they shut the plant down. Where all of those guys and girls go to work? Darren Charleston now, Volvo's there, Boeing's there, all of that type of stuff. And you know why they can obtain those jobs? It's because while they were a machinist and a union worker, they obtained skills and a trade that allowed them to apply and say, I have this, and I was affiliated with this, Boeing's hired him, Volvo's hired him, Big W's hired him. So that's, that's the thing with me, and that's my passion. I would love to sit down and talk to these black, African American business owners that have this thing in their head that we don't accept or we can't partner. Like, let's get at a table, I'll pay for it. Let's get at a table and have a conversation. All this speculation is crazy to me. Wait.
I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember Oriada and then Councilmember Noga, then we're going to transition to, uh, Congressman Barrett.
Yeah, I think too, a comment that I'm hearing in the conversation, um, even when we're talking about like dissecting data and, and points, I think to the point that you made, Councilwoman Burrows, earlier, that's a problem is that we're not even comparing data to anything, right? So we're, we're looking at a project and we're saying, you know, there's twenty, thirty percent participation for women owned businesses. There's, you know, fifty percent minority businesses. And then we're saying, you know, that's not enough. Um, but I'm looking at what the participation would be without these standards written into a project labor agreement. You're not, um, you're just saying that this project that had parameters built into it that we know factually benefited these high level groups of people, isn't enough without saying if it didn't. What would the number of participation look for these exact same groups? And I think that's what's really problematic because you're creating this false narrative as if without the parameters, there would have been more projects. Without the parameters, we would spend more money. And I beg to, you know, I, I don't believe that to be true, right? And I think the example you gave, Councilwoman Burrows, is a great point for the project labor agreement in the school system. Um, when asked, okay, so what was the numbers and what was spent? And how many people were hired and what that looked like for employment in local residents? It was silence because we didn't have that data point. Um, so I think the first thing before we could even talk about if it's harmful or not is to make sure you have the data point of what the county is doing without any prompting here. What is the wages? What is the benefit? What is the hiring? What does the spending look like? And then compare it to these projects and see if we're reading the mustard without these parameters. Because without it, you're not saying anything, nothing of real value. Um, and I think that, uh, I witnessed, for example, in the school system, even we set standards for, um, projects with MBEs. They came to the school board and rushed them to waive all of the requirements. We're giving all of the money that was set aside for MBEs. Um, and sadly, um, the majority looked different in that day. And the people voted to waive all of the requirements that were set aside for MBEs. And I sat in those meetings and watched it happen. Um, so sometimes we'll set aside written for MBEs and MBE as the entities. And again, this is not attached to a project labor agreement, this was, we had said we want these contracts to go via business owners. And we just waived them away. There was labor component at play, we just waived them away. And the argument when I sat there was they couldn't find any minority business owners to participate. That came from Dr. Bolson and the administration. So I think we're going to have this kind of conversation, we need to have the conversation in a full way. Also put ourselves accountable to what we're doing to actually employ and bolster and give contracts to minority business, minority business owners. And what we do, we waived, why we said we waived, and what is the issue with us finding them? And what is our issue with working with them? The same where we're asking questions of the labor unions and why they don't have enough signatures. They ask ourselves the same question, or why we're waiving and saying we can't find these people to do business with for counting dollars, for taxpayer dollars, put back into the, um, these entities that we're talking about. So I think if we're just going to have this conversation, it has to be one of actual substance, um, real, you know, data points, things to compare. Cause if you don't do it, all I'm hearing is really good data points on the fact that we've done business um, and elevated space and opportunity for women and minority owned businesses. And I, I think the county could learn something from the labor unions and what they're doing.
Me too. Uh, we are, we are way past time. Now, I can, ten sites is going to be great because we have a session starts at three, and there was one more presentation after this one. So I don't know how they're going to do that.
So real quick, the Prince George's County schools, there was six of them or nine of them.
Six.
Six that came out, all of which began from the front and went to a large contractor, not a minority business, based out of.
With the exception, with the exception of two, which was Pennsylvania based, tell me.
Three of them went to a Pennsylvania based contractor.
Right.
If there's be equal outreach and outcry on issues like that. I mean, like, you're not our enemy.
No, I, I want to work with you because I want to understand what, what this narrative is.
CB fifty one last year, for that reason. I, I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we need to have a conversation outside of this right here, a real one, with these individuals that have complaints of rights, because we need to bridge this gap because we're not doing enough with the county dollars within the county or the county residents. And we want to be your partners.
And that's the part, we want to eliminate this middle wear and sell lab, being all in the same room and not just let it be just rumors and hearsay, like us, all of those players in those roles.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have to switch out the, uh, slides to, you know?
Please, please come on. Absolutely, I, I, I was going to. I'm talking about this issue. To the line, they were saying. I'll pay for it.
I'll pay for it.
Hey, hey. You just let me know. It's for a one, six oh nine, nineteen twenty. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. I need to say, I need to say, but I need to say. Say. I probably didn't say this.
I'll, I'll.
I have to.
Totally. It's easy out here.
There's a hundred thirty minutes.
That's what I said, that is.
I currently do not have a break, this is all that, so. Councilmember Steve is in turn. We'll try to, to pass it back to you, you're paying. Councilor Steve is in her, we'll try to get the progressive panel to your hand. Okay, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have some councilors here, we're at four of these. Oh, there's Jimmy. I didn't wanna push you. Alright, then we're so blessed to have progressive Maryland. Progressive Maryland has done so many wonderful things, uh, in our county for so long. Um, and so it's so exciting to be educated, vibrant, and, and, and.
Alright, well, thank you everybody who's here. Uh, and I just wanted to, I don't know if on top of all you can hear, but congratulations to the new chair and vice chair. And to everybody on their elections, uh, coming off of the hard fought primaries and, you know, the global general election. Uh, I'm just really happy to see, uh, the people that are on this council now, and the direction that y'all have already chosen to take with the people's platform, people's agenda. So, you pat yourself on the back for that. Uh, so I think y'all are doing pretty well. Uh, I am a little asleep, so I would try to keep it, some of, we're just had a baby. So, I don't need the baby's fault, and also watching that, with, you watched the baby. Uh, he cut me up a little bit last night. So, let's, let's go on to the next slide, and I'll introduce, uh, the folks that are up here. Who need to stand up. Oh, I, I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta do this.
I think it's the other one.
Transcorp, okay. Okay, okay, so put it backwards. Okay, so, alright, so, uh, many of you have been familiar with progressive Maryland. We are one of the state's largest community-based political organizations who work throughout the state of Maryland, uh, at both the state, local, and federal level, uh, to, with an agenda to organize everyday working people, to claim power for themselves, to, you know, get more out of our communities and our local governments, and more of our officials to be training, leadership development, as well as, uh, policy change work as well. So, and our training includes, uh, training of candidates, as well as community leaders. Uh, so, just a bit of a background on us. Okay, so, the, what we're gonna cover largely today, along with theme of labor, is, you know, the, the central point here that I wanna strike really is that, you know, when we talk about closing the income and economic gap, or the wealth gap, that this gap needs to start, actually, uh, with addressing the needs and disparities based by black workers. So, I am the somewhat a, a black entrepreneur. I also have another entrepreneur, uh, and, uh, my sister runs a small business as well. So, I definitely understand the need to support, uh, black businesses and, and folks that are building startups and very innovative things. Uh, however, in order to achieve many of the, many of the goals that we have a true racial equity, particularly in Prince George County, particularly across the country, the agenda starts with black workers and working people, and, and particularly. So, uh, and, and, there's a couple of key reasons for that, briefly. So, first and foremost, because of some of the difficulties that we have in the fact that only less than one percent, actually, point zero zero three percent of our broader country, uh, of the black population is actually black business owners. So, we're talking about probably the masses of black, uh, people in this country, particularly in Prince George County, or all of the African-American. You, you have to start with where most of the people are. Most of them are actually of workforce. Uh, and black businesses face a great degree of like pressures and financial pressures. And in fact, many of them, like, actually struggle quite a bit. Only eight out of the ten, eight out of ten black businesses actually are finally being successful, uh, in the first place. So, in other than these, we want to support there. Uh, if we're going to reach and truly support in an economic way, you know, black folks more broadly, you know, the black worker is a significant risk for support. So, I know a lot of folks already agree with that. And so that's the theme of our, our presentation today. We're gonna cover, uh, actually, you know, just, uh, a few specific, uh, areas related to that. And so I'll just introduce the, or. There we are. And so we've got some folks with me here, kind of today, and I'll just introduce them, so.
Hello, my name is Brianna Mee, and I am a digital and worker organizer at One Fair Wage.
Good afternoon, I'm LaShawn, ponder mostly. I am District Twenty-three A resident. Um, I'm a twenty-seven-year educator and a volunteer leader with progressive Maryland since twenty nineteen.
So, uh, first, Brianna's gonna start with, uh, speaking about one of the initiatives that will be in full support of with One Fair Wage, which is eliminating the gap, uh, for tip workers in the minimum wage. And so I want Brianna to speak to that, but we've worked a long time for One Fair Wage, as well as the Prince George County Center, uh, to fight for tip workers. So, uh, which particular?
So, as many of you may know, DC recently passed a ballot initiative raising the minimum wage from five dollars and thirty-five cents to sixty dollars and ten cents. We're trying to take momentum from Washington DC to that same thing in Maryland. With that said, Maryland is still only at a subminimum wage of three dollars and sixty-three cents. West is, uh, Governor-elect Westmore is planning on accelerating the bill for minimum wage to fifteen dollars. And so we are planning on getting one. He asked you guys to do a capital bill for us. Uh, this is a direct legacy of slavery, you know, like the subminimum wage is a part of a workforce of over a hundred and five thousand tip workers, and that's sixty-five percent of women, um, and fifty-two percent of people of color. And with this said, there's so many black women, specifically, that experience the, the brutality of not being paid during or after emancipation, um, due to the tip credit. And we use tip credit, because it shouldn't be something that is, is a full wage already. You shouldn't be a, um, employer not paying the full wage for your employees. And so today, Maryland remains one of forty-three states that permits this business model of slavery, and has allowed a for, a workforce that is overwhelmingly disproportionately women of color for a hundred and fifty years in emancipation. This is also the industry that has the highest rate of single mothers. So just saying, the highest rate of single mothers, the highest rate of black women not being paid. Um, this also includes those that are receiving discrimination, um, sex, gender discrimination, as well as disability discrimination. And so the bill in Maryland, as the state, we are asking for not only those with disabilities to have an acceleration for a full living wage, minimum wage, but for all workers have an acceleration to fifteen dollars plus this on top.
Thank you. Um, so it pertains to workforce. Um, the issue of reentry, which has been the issue I have, uh, worked on with, uh, volunteers with progressive Maryland, I performed the Returning Citizens Task Force in twenty nineteen, um, because we felt that the issues, although there was discourse out in the community, the issues themselves, we believed to be in a distorted, and, and so we needed to get greater clarity around what the issues are, um, surrounding returning citizens and their transition back to community, who they are, um, and the impact of, um, not meeting the needs of returning citizens. So our focus has been, as the Returning Citizens Task Force since twenty nineteen, uh, we focused on six, um, major issues, uh, related to reentry. Motor education, housing, jobs, healthcare, a transition center, where we can centralize resources and access to resources, and then an executive office. Uh, we've been locked during COVID in a virtual environment, like many of us, but we were quite successful at, uh, working. We petitioned the county attorney, and the state's attorney, and now we do have executive offices in both, um, the state's attorney's office, uh, and in the county's tax office, focused on, uh, reentry and returning citizens affairs. Um, but the issue of workforce, um, and job readiness, and job training certainly are issues that, there's so many priorities, so many needs, uh, for returning citizens. Those certainly rise to the top. Uh, as an educator, I come to this, um, to this issue with a concern for at-risk youth who have one or more parents who are incarcerated. Um, as a Catholic school educator, we believe parents are the first educators of their children. And if we don't ensure that the parents are able to serve and support their children, uh, then, uh, we're talking not just about the immediate, uh, adults in the workforce, those, uh, returning citizens who need jobs and training, et cetera, but we're also talking about the next generation of workers in our workforce, who will experience similar barriers or gaps, because they're at least not being met while of school age. Um, so I can think about this certainly from a universal design perspective for the educators in the room. If we focus on, as we stated, the folks on the fringe in our Prince George County community, and we look at very seriously, see what the issues are, with clarity, with data, and data strategy, and just need for data around the issues. Of those issues, and addressing those issues. We end up developing resources and services and solutions for those of us who are at the center, who don't even know we have a need or problem. So it serves all of us to address the needs of those on the fringe. Um, so, uh, we ask, as the Returning Citizens Task Force of progressive Maryland, for your continued support and participation, we'd like to engage more with the members of this body. Uh, we thank you for your input and orders in the past, and listening to us. We came to you with an ask for the reentry advisory board. You passed that legislation and formed that body. But obviously, there's more work that we need to do. So we ask for, uh, your continued collaboration. We invite you, anyone in this room, anyone who you know might be interested, to join us on Tuesday evenings at six o'clock for virtual meetings. We meet for one hour. Uh, we have a really committed group. Um, and, uh, and the thing we need here is this, is with gathering the data, and doing the additional research and the analysis on the issues. And finally, uh, we certainly welcome funding and support. We, uh, received a sizable grant last year that allowed us to provide ten and twenty thousand dollar grants to reentry service providers in the community. So we award our first cohort, we're looking forward to awarding the second cohort coming up next year. And also certain community, addressing, uh, trauma-informed care, providing those kinds of services. Uh, arts healing, that address not just the individual, uh, injustice-impacted person, but also their families. Because we do believe that this issue, at the top of all of these issues, is family identification. So, so I know for sure on time. Um, but clearly, the issue of reentry affects our workforce today and well into the future. And if we aren't addressing, uh, the needs of returning citizens, then we're gonna continue to seek ass, uh, in, uh, in workforce development and in workplace. Thank you.
So, the, the next thing, uh, that we'll talk about is something that I also saw, you know, like an outline for in the, the people's agenda, uh, that was graciously spoken about, uh, on that day, on the, on the council first day, when y'all was sworn in. And, and that is a shift in our approach to economic development, which I think goes across the, the theme for today in general. And there are actually, like, various models for economic development that are quite different, that are being done across the country, also across, across the world. And, uh, one such approach that leaps broader and deeper, like, economic equity is a community wealth building approach. You'll see on slides, I believe, if you have, like, kind of the basic definition for community wealth building. Uh, just to give you the example, uh, one of the examples that's been touted across countries is the Cleveland model, uh, and the Evergreen Cooperative there, where, in the community wealth building approach, they leverage an anchor institution, like a hospital in their community, to seed other local economic growth as well. So, just for an example, I believe it started off with, uh, laundry, uh, services. So, the, uh, the hospital had curies for cleaning sheets, uh, cleaning different things, you know, all kinds of clothes, and things that people wear in the hospital. And instead of going to just any random outside vendor, they chose to create a cooperative, being a worker-owned enterprise that actually would do the laundry work for the hospital. So, when we talk about, like, investment into our communities, it's also a part of our leverage local resources that we already had to make money circularly in our communities, uh, create more opportunities for economic ownership as well. So, uh, the Cleveland model is one such example of this approach. Uh, which you'll also find in this purchase, it's about, you know, not just centering, like, the needs of, like, enterprises of, like, whatever, maybe, you know, an outside developer, maybe one, or someone of that nature, but, you know, taking a community-first approach, thinking about the overall equity provision, such as labor, which we just talked about. So, I just, we're gonna highlight just some of the four main themes for the wealth building approaches. There's, uh, one being plural ownership of the economy, so meaning more opportunities for economic democracy, as they would say. Uh, one example being cooperatives, so worker-owned cooperatives, and community-owned cooperatives. Uh, right in, uh, I think it's in capitalizing, uh, capitalizing principles issue, there's a, a small grocery store that is beginning to explore a community-owned model in which community members would be able to have shares uh, in the ownership of that grocery store. That's like one example of that. And then making financial power work for local places. So that means, is, uh, for instance, I remember when, uh, County Executive Baker proposed the, uh, Economic Development Sentiment Fund. And I believe it was fifty million dollars allocated, uh, for that fund. So, leveraging the local resources that we have, such as funds like that, or regional funds, as well as bond inventory, to invest in local communities, as well as local ownership stakes. So, one of the things that's important is, uh, when we talk about closing the wealth divide, one aspect of it is wages, of course, union jobs, it'd be more possible for people to earn their wealth if they actually have an income or a living on, right? But another aspect is ownership, and that doesn't get spoken about enough. And there are incredible barriers to ownership in the traditional, uh, business models, which, uh, cooperatives and publicly-supported cooperatives actually help to tackle some of those. Uh, next is fair employment and just labor markets, which we just finished a whole section talking about. Uh, but encouraging and incentivizing, uh, you know, the right to organize, the right for employees to bargain for higher wages and better benefits. Uh, and then progressive procurement, so the example that I just gave, the Cleveland model, when they thought about their procurement for their hospital system. They thought locally, and they thought creatively about how a type of cooperative approach should be more beneficial for the community with the law. And lastly, socially productive use of land and property. So we got a lot of land in Prince George County. It's, it's tremendous asset, and it's one of the reasons that many folks look at our county as, like, as a piece of cake, very good slice up, in certain instances. Uh, and what we have to do is be smart about using that land and making sure that we create opportunities for shared ownership in land, structures like that, public ownership land, uh, you know, it's even land, access things of that nature. And, um, And, uh, and whenever we are putting public land into commercial use, making sure that we have the most benefit for our residents as possible. So that's kind of some of the essentials of the community wealth building approach. And any solid, uh, questions about any of the reasons?
Thank you, I'd be very glad to show you, definitely, uh, how to inspire by the framing of the tip issue, as, you know, you framed it in the sense of most of those workers are black women, black single mothers. Definitely asked a lot of urgency in my eyes to do something about it. I know that the council is very passionate about entry as well, and so, it makes sense that you provide full proposals of menus and options and things that we can do legislatively, financially, and that would be helpful. Awesome, I'll just try to.
I'll just say, well, thank you, I mean, all for your presentation. The community wealth building, obviously, that is, that is a way to, uh, you know, uplift our communities and the people in it. And, um, I mean, I, I'm wondering, are you working on, you know, models, uh, currently? Or is that, you're, you're educating us on, on, on this, and, um, it's something that typically, um, you know, it's been talked about in different, different ways, but, you know, institutions can be powerful, more powerful in, in uplifting communities, if they're spending their dollars, you know, locally, and, and not just locally, um, you know, the, the people who are running them, or, or the ownership structure, so. I don't know if you have, I mean, I know there are cooperatives, there are, there are things in our, in our county like that, but, um, do you know of others that are, are ongoing, or that are, in Germany?
Well, yes, especially now that you're here, and some of your, your colleagues as well, I think there'd be even more opportunities to anchor institutions. Uh, but one, uh, one that I mentioned that I'll always again, uh, look forward to working for Crystal on this, this is a good food market, uh, that is, has reached out to us about how can we collaborate from an organizing standpoint, uh, to help them in a transition to becoming a, a community-owned enterprise, uh, similar to, um, in Greenbelt, uh, as you were, like, was we kind of like, a couple of pride, you know, points of pride in our county, uh, to this model, like, one being the University of Maryland, you could get, or, or, uh, Gar Alpern, who's, uh, who's one of the leading thinkers in this model, uh, and in residence, someone who said this sometime, I think it was around in Greenbelt, there's a whole, little community wealth building, like, ecosystem that has been in place since nineteen forty or something like that, uh, with the, uh, Greenbelt, uh, grocery cooperative, and we figured cooperative, a number, in the cooperative housing there, uh, so there's some examples to build on. Um, and one of those things, which I, I think, you know, with some of the county's support, uh, can, could be, you know, lead into this community-based approach.
Um, I was gonna add, I'm really excited about, uh, the opportunity for us to work together. I had cut my teeth back, Professor Maryland, um, first organization that I became an advocate, um, for, for infrastructure, same when I moved here. Um, thank you, obviously, Larry Burrow, his mentorship over the last.
We're making blush.
Over the last few years, I can never, um, speak with him without, you know, thanking him for that support. Um, and one of the things I think we'll be really excited and would love to, um, work with you guys on as well, uh, is guarantee basic income.